Thank you so much. Can we get the candidates for District Six to the stage, please? Turn on the right channels. Are we able to begin with opening statements? We have Aaron Whitley and Leonard Massey here. Mr. Whitley, we'll begin with you. You have one minute for your opening statement.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having me. Now, I'm a husband. I'm a father. I'm a graduate of Savannah State University. I'm a combat veteran. I'm certified county commissioner, certified by UGA's Carl Vinson Institute of Government. And since I've been your commissioner, I've worked with my colleagues on both sides of the aisle to get things done and tackle the challenges that we're facing. Now, I've stood shoulder to shoulder with the citizens of West Chatham to include Georgetown, to make sure that the citizens are at the table when it comes to the growth and development that we're experiencing. I've made sure that O'Geechi Farms is no longer a forgotten part of our district. I've worked with aldermen and women throughout the county to get things done. If I'm reelected, I'll work to get rid of the fire fee. I'll support our first responders and work to get that multi-court facility built because you do know it is going to be built across the street from here. So I look forward to serving you all and look forward to this forum.
Thank you. That's your time. Mr. Massey, one minute to you.
Yes, sir. Does everybody hear me? Hello, my name? Hello? Alright, that's better. Everybody, my name is Alonar Massey. I'm a native of Savannah. I have a father of five, two boys, three daughters. I've been married to my beautiful wife, who's in the crowd for the last 12 years. And I was raised right here in Savannah by a single mom that worked tirelessly to provide for me and my six siblings, well, my five siblings, there's six of us total. And though it was hard, she instilled the values in all of us that govern my every action even to this day. But that includes duty to your family, duty to your community, putting God first. And she instilled in all of us, no matter how hard it is, we could accomplish anything if we put our minds to it. And so professionally, I've worked as a hotel general manager downtown Savannah for the last 13 years where my specialty has been taking on underperforming and distressed assets and turning them to high-performing operations. For the last year, I've transitioned to work with our seniors. I'm the president and executive director of the society.
Sorry to stop you, but the title is, "Thank you so much." We will go ahead, dive in, and begin with...
Can we get the time guy to move to the middle, if you don't mind?
You want to be able to see him as well?
If you don't mind.
I know, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. The first question, and this is for both candidates. We will begin with Mr. Massey as the answers start. You do remember, you have a minute and a half to answer. This question is about Chatham County's aging infrastructure. Addressing all of our streets, sidewalks, bridges across the county would require millions of dollars. What are the priority areas within your district? And what is your strategy for tackling this challenge?
So right now, I feel that it's not necessarily a revenue problem. It is a priority problem here in Chatham County and District Six in particular. In the Bradley Point area, we have a lot of flooding in that capacity. And also in the Sixth District, the population has grown exponentially in the last six years. And we have the same exact infrastructure that we inherited six years ago. And so I believe that we should prioritize making sure that the quality of life is positively impacted before we just put more on top of more. And in particular, in Bradley Point South right now, there's a provision to take the lot sizes down from 50 feet to 30 feet to accommodate more housing. We all know we need more housing in the Sixth District. However, the quality of life has been diminishing. And if we continue to do the same things we have done without addressing that infrastructure, it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. I've been going door to door almost every single day, every weekend, and every resident that I speak to, whether they're Democrat or Republican, the problem that they see is the infrastructure, the traffic in the county not really addressing that effectively. And so I do understand right now the county spends about 73% of their budget on infrastructure. I do think that needs to be increased and it needs to be targeted in the areas countywide that are most affected.
Thank you. Mr. Whitley, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Yes. The question is about Chatham County aging infrastructure. Addressing all of our streets, our sidewalks, our bridges across the county would require millions of dollars. What are the priority areas within your district? And what is your strategy for tackling this challenge?
So thank you for that. So when it comes to our infrastructure challenges, very complex because the county only has jurisdiction over unincorporated areas. With that being the case, I think of places such as the traffic that we face, we all face to get here. That was caused by the light at Sweetwater Station Drive, which is on Highway 204. The challenge there is that 204 is a state highway. Therefore, the county has to work with the state to get that done. But don't fret, we're actually doing something about that. We have an active study currently for that very intersection to look at how we can get rid of that light, to lessen those traffic woes. Also, we have another traffic study taking place on Highway 17, which again is a state route. So the county can't do anything specifically there without the go-ahead from the state. So we are doing what it takes to get that done. Now, with the annexation that's been taking place throughout our county, what that has done is tied the county's hand in a lot of ways. Annexation is ultimately the city of Savannah creating new spaces within the city of Savannah. The challenge is the county does not allow us to actually... Excuse me, the city is their responsibility to make those roadways. So Bradley Point, Teal Lake, those are two city of Savannah areas within our district. They are relegated to what the city does first. We, as the county, don't have sole discretion on what to do with those areas. But we are working in collaboration with them to get it done.
Your time. Thank you. Next question. This one from a student who is concerned about the vacant Savannah Mall and its impact on the local economy and community. The Savannah Mall was sold at auction in 2022. The new owner still has not updated the community about what will happen there. So if you had a say in the future development of the property, what type of developments do you think is most needed in this part of District Six? Mr. Whitley will start with you.
So I'd like to see that be more of a mixed-use development. Some housing, also some commercial space. Because here on the south side, as you see, we're short of businesses. I like to see small businesses, considering that small business is the backbone of our economy. So I'd like to see something that facilitates affordable housing, but also a place for people to shop, a place for people to spend money, a place for small business owners to get their show on the road, if you will. Now, the challenge there is, as a government official, I can only do so much. I'm not in the business of... I don't believe that government should tell private business what to do. So I don't think we should overstep there. However, if there are vagrancy issues, which we have seen, or if there are crime issues, which could be the case, then we need to step in there. But again, best-case scenario, I'd love to see a mixed-use development there with commercial and housing, considering that housing has gotten so unaffordable in our community due to our growth. There's a tremendous need for places for our workforce to live. It makes no sense for our first responders to have to live outside of our county lines to be able to afford a place to live. So I'd like to see something like that on the Sixth District. I think it'll be a catalyst for growth and create spaces for us to enjoy and show our tourists how beautiful the south side is.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, if you had a say in the future development of the Savannah Mall, what type of developments do you think is most needed in this part of District Six?
Well, of course, housing is a major, major concern in District Six. Now, the funny thing about the Savannah Mall project in particular, a friend of mine, her family actually is the one that purchased the Savannah Mall. And it was up for auction. That was a prime opportunity for the county to have leadership and actually bid on that particular property. So the government actually would have a say on what is the best case use for that particular property. And I do think we missed the ball with that particular property. In addition to the property that was across the street from it that was for sale, but the county did not purchase it. And so the best-case scenario is for it to be a mixed-use type of facility. However, housing is the number-one issue that plagues the Sixth District. The traffic just keeps getting worse and worse and worse. And we're just putting more housing in areas that are already oversaturated. So we do need to broaden the base. That is a prime opportunity to do that. And I do also happen to know the ownership of that Savannah Mall is open to suggestions from the county. And they've been trying to work with our local municipalities to come up with the best-case use for that particular property.
Can I rebut? Excuse me.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
As a sitting... Absolutely. As a sitting member of this commission...
Starting when? 30 seconds for the question.
As a sitting member of this commission, I think it's important for everybody to know that government cannot go and bid in auction. If we could have, we would have. I think that would be a great location for our regional athletic facility, which we do have funding slotted for in Splot Seven. But unfortunately, we cannot go into bid like that because for us to move money, it takes the act of the commission. So that's why the commission didn't bid on that property. That was all.
You're fine to respond. We're going to start the clock. 30 seconds. Go.
Yes, ma'am. The thing with that, just how the county just now, like they... You're able to issue bonds for certain assets. And so even if the county cannot directly bid on it, the county could have an agent that could have done the bidding for the county. Just how they gave $130 million bond to SIA in order to purchase some things for the port. There's different ways the county can act to acquire that property. So they might can't do bidding directly, but we all know there's mechanism where they could have acquired it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now we will move on to the next question. And District Six has become something of a haven for corporations and chains. What is your plan to bring more local business to the district? And Mr. Massey will begin with you.
To bring more local business to the district?
Yes.
Well, we actually have to have a tax incentive, I believe, for local businesses to want to invest in the communities where they actually grew up. And we also should incentivize the type of businesses that we need in the Sixth District. So we just don't want any and all type of businesses that might have an adverse effect on the quality of life of the community. So we should know exactly, okay, our particular community needs this. What could we incentivize as a commission to bring that type of business into our community? We should go ahead and push that. And so of course, you cannot just mandate this person does this particular thing because it is a private-public type of partnership that has to take place. But we can make sure that in our budget and our tax code, the way that we're incentivizing certain businesses draws on what we need as a district.
Thank you. And Mr. Whitley, what are your thoughts?
Yep. So I think that's a great question. And unfortunately, the county commission is limited in this space as well. When we talk about the south side, the county commission only has sole discretion over unincorporated areas. Everything else that falls within the city of Savannah, we have to work with the city of Savannah. I'm absolutely open and have proven to have worked with our partners at the city of Savannah. But I think the answer to that is collaborative area planning. What we have not had throughout our county is pretty much overlays where we get with our planning commission, which is partially funded by the city of Savannah and Chatham County, to say, hey, we're going to set up what we would like to see here. Now, this, of course, would be a lengthy process because we have to make sure that citizens are a part of that. So again, collaborative area planning would be great to solve that. But aside from that, you know, tax incentives aren't... We could potentially offer some tax incentives, but we're very limited because our tax incentives would be maintenance and operations, whereas everybody in the county pays that. But on the south side, the majority of this property that we're seeing, that's owned commercial, is within the city of Savannah. So again, unfortunately, our hands are tied. I remember when I was first running, I had a pie in the sky thought like that as well. But when I got in, I became a certified county commissioner. I learned what we actually could and couldn't do, and it's tough. I know. It's frustrating as well.
Thank you. Let's move on here to this next question. District Six has many families, schools, and neighborhoods. So what plans do you have for recreation and community events in the district? Mr. Whitley, you begin.
Absolutely. So something I'm extremely proud of. I've worked with our commission to get the Splot Seven project of a regional athletic facility to be placed in this district. Now, that facility is going to be a multi-court facility. We've had multiple workshops about it. If you, you know, Google it, you'll see what I'm talking about. But that is going to be put right next to Lowe's, next door to the Home Depot shopping center. So we own that land, and we're going to be placing that there. I think that's one of those spaces where we can get families in. We can have youth go and engage in different things. Something else is working with, again, collaboratively with our municipality partners to create a more robust recreation system. We have recreation now that is city-specific. There's City of Savannah, there's Chatham County Rec, there's Garden City Rec. Well, if we pooled our resources, I think we could offer a more robust recreation program for our community. The last thing I would say is, you know, tapping into means for families and people to get engaged, that's not sports. So something that I did is work with my community stakeholders to create youth court. That's a way to get youth involved in court and law and have a positive interaction with the criminal justice system. So we need spaces like that to ultimately create a better society for us all.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, what plans do you have for recreation and community events in the district?
As you know, they do have the recreation thing that's going on behind Lowe's. That is a positive for our district. Unfortunately, it's going to be a decade or more before we actually see that coming to fruition. So what can we do right now to address that issue in our district? Of course, I believe that we should engage all of our stakeholders. I kind of agree with Aaron in that regard, that we have different municipalities with different functions that have different assets. And right now, there's not the best communication and the best collaboration to administer those assets for the community. Because it's one of the things I just want to bring everybody back to. District Six is a big district, but there is some things that the city has and there's some things that the county has. The county is only responsible for unincorporated Chatham. However, every resident that's in the Sixth District that can vote, whether you're a City of Savannah resident or you live unincorporated, they vote to elect us. And so I believe that it's not the appropriate response to just pass the buck along to the city when you have that resident and you're asking for their vote. And then when something comes up, you say, hey, the city actually takes care of that. I think that we need to get the city of Savannah in a room with us, and we need to actually hash out some of these things because that's what the people elected us to do. Being an elected leader is hard, but we ask you guys to do that. And so we need to do what's best for the community.
Mr. Whitley, I do want to ask you this question for rebuttal. Will it really take 10 years?
Yeah, I think that was quite presumptive by my friend here to say that.
It took 25 years to build the courthouse.
And I've been on the commission for four years. And the courthouse is getting finished. The emergency operations center is getting underway. We've already had a groundbreaking. And the emergency... Excuse me, the early learning center is in the process of getting built. So we have worked tirelessly to shorten up the timeframe on these Splot projects, first of all. Now, I just want to say, as it relates to the term passing the buck, you know, there's one thing to pass the buck. There's one thing to pass...
I mean, he's going on longer than 30 seconds.
Listen, let me just say this, okay? We are going to be cordial tonight.
Absolutely.
I asked Mr. Whitley a question about will it really take 10 years? And I will allow you, as your moderator, to finish your statement. And Mr. Massey, we will make sure that we give you equal time when it's necessary. So because I asked you that question, you've answered it. Now, will you start the clock, please? And you have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
And we'll continue with the next question.
Thank you. So as it relates to passing the buck, there's one thing to pass the buck, there's another thing to know what you're getting yourself into. What I will never do is tell the citizens of Savannah or the citizens of Chatham County something that is not the case. One thing that is not the case is that we can just do whatever we want in Chatham County just because the city of Savannah lies within Chatham County. That is not the case. And it's important for you to know that so that as you move forward, you don't presume that the county can do something that we can't. And that was the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on with the next question. And Mr. Massey will begin with you. What issue do you see as the most pressing issue facing District Six? And how would you address that need if you are elected as District Six representative?
Well, the most pressing need for District Six is the infrastructure, quite frankly. And again, it's not pie in the sky to say that we can accomplish something because we actually can accomplish it if we have the will to accomplish it. And so right now, you can ask stakeholders in any particular function or area of our county. And right now, the buy-in with the stakeholders is not where it needs to be. So that was the point that I was making. The city of Savannah has its agenda, the county has its agenda. And I do believe because they work together in the past to accomplish great issues, this is an issue that they could accomplish together. And right now, we have been falling short in that regard. So it's not necessary to pass judgment at a particular person, but we do have to recognize reality. It took the county 25 years to build the courthouse. And I would be very surprised if it takes them less than 10 years to build this facility that he's talking about. And more than likely, it's going to be more than 10 years. That is just the facts.
Mr. Whitley, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing District Six going forward if you're reelected?
Yep. So growth is happening at a tremendous rate. And the Sixth District is part of that last frontier of growth. And so area planning and infrastructure, I'll agree with Mr. Massey on that. Infrastructure is going to be big. How we create roadways to move people, how we make our transportation, public transportation system more robust to move people, to lessen vehicles on the roadway. But also, water is going to be another part. Why I say that is because we have a looming water challenge in that we're having to lessen the draw from the aquifer. We have a need to create more water because we have so much growth. So we're going to have to be thinking more regionally. But before I even get there, we have to make sure that the citizens are at the table when it comes to the growth and the infrastructure challenges that we need to tackle. So infrastructure, but also the other thing I want to add is the vagrancy issue. So we have homelessness that has expanded tremendously throughout our district. And homelessness is not a crime, but vagrancy, people using drugs in public, people littering all over the place, is a challenge. So I think that's going to be one of those other pressing challenges that we're going to have to be creative to solve in order to not criminalize homelessness, but make sure that we are also keeping our streets safe for our families.
Thank you. All right, next question. In 2024, the county budgeted $18.5 million to provide its own fire services. Some county residents have expressed concern that the general fund and special service district budgets still include a fire fee for unincorporated residents. What steps, if any, do you plan to take to address this issue, Mr. Whitley?
Yep. So I think that's a great question. The fire situation was a challenge that we had to face immediately because if we waited any longer, we would spend a whole lot of money to create a fire department. Fire safety should not be left to a third-party entity. Now, to answer the question, the fire fee does not come out of the general fund. The fire fund, which is $18.5 million, is funded by the SSD and the fire fees that are collected. Now, it is my goal to get rid of that fire fee within the next three to five years. But until we get there, I can tell you that it is not coming out of the general fund because the people who benefit from that service live in unincorporated Chatham County. And to just while I have time, since he hasn't hit me with the 30 seconds yet, I'll say that us, I'm one of the people who really felt strongly about us creating a fire department because, again, we cannot leave fire safety, your safety, to a third-party entity. Now, we were able to purchase a fire department for $7.5 million. If we waited any longer, then it would have been a whole lot more money. We were able to accomplish this without raising the millage rate. So now, we have a county fire department that went immediately into action during our recent hurricane. So I think we made a darn good choice. Now, it's painful right now, and I understand that. But with the great growth that we're experiencing, if we don't prepare for tomorrow, we'll sit back and wish that we did something then. So to do that without raising the millage, I think, was great. And I applaud my colleagues and also Chatham Emergency Services.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, what steps, if any, do you plan to take to address the fire fee issue?
Well, the fire fee is something that should not have been passed in the first place. And so it's easy to say you'll get rid of it when we shouldn't have passed it in the first place because it's the single most unpopular issue in unincorporated Chatham County today. So that's one thing that we should do, we should not have done in the first place, and that's what I would try to work to get rid of on day one. Another thing about the fire fee or about the fire department, what the county did by purchasing that fire department was something that the community had been speaking or asking them to do for over a decade. It's been an issue in Chatham County. And the only reason that it got addressed is because they passed the fire fee, and it was so unpopular, so they had to purchase the assets of that particular organization. Because South Side Fire was a private organization, and it's the only private organization that provided fire services in Chatham County. It never should have been that way. And so we had the resources to do this beforehand, and we waited until it became an issue and a struggle that was breaking the communities back. And then we decided to act on it. And so if you get me in this position, I truly believe that my background provides me with the expertise and the foresight to plan accordingly, to look at these issues down the road, 10, five and 10 years down, so that we're not caught blindside and then having to react in a manner that we did to purchase the fire department.
Let's move on. And here's why. We want to get as many questions as possible.
That's fine.
Okay, let's do that. Mr. Massey, we're going to stick with you. This next question is from a student who's home flooded near the O'Geechi River during Hurricane Debbie. The rainfall in Chatham and surrounding counties following Debbie was referred to as a 100-year flood. The hurricane underscored persistent problems with flooding and drainage in the county's roadways and low-lying areas. What actions will the county take to prepare for future flooding due to natural disasters? So, Mr. Massey, if you're elected, what would you push to prepare for future flooding?
Well, it comes back to what we've been talking about the whole time. Infrastructure in District Six or in Chatham County is terrible. Right now, according to Chatham County's website, we spend about 73% of our budget on infrastructure. And the infrastructure is still terrible, to be honest with you. There's the same issue, same flooding that happened year after year after year. And so we have to be more strategic in the way that we are addressing the needs of the community. So I truly believe that we need to spend a little bit more money on the infrastructure. And the way you do that is prioritizing when you're setting the budget and the agenda for the county. And so first off, we need more leadership, or better leadership at the county level. That's what I'm hoping for and supporting Joe Boblaski for chairman so that he can set the agenda and that we can get those things on the agenda that affects the county and the residents on day one. And so we do need to increase the budget. We actually have to implement things in a more speedy manner. And we can work with our state partners because there's funding at the state to address some of this issue, and the money is just sitting there. And so I'll work with our state partners and then prioritize the budget to address those needs.
Thank you. Mr. Whitley, your thoughts in terms of the actions that the county should take? Perhaps you've been on the commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Going forward, if there's a natural disaster, what will the county step up to do?
Yes, ma'am. So I think it's important to kind of set the tone with reality and not perception. So what took place with that 100-year flood was not a failure of infrastructure. It was the O'Geechi River overflowed. It was not our drainage systems failing, alright? Now, what we experienced was five days of straight rain. So yes, our drainage systems were stretched very thin. That is absolutely true. But the flooding that took place was not due to failure of our drainage systems. Let's be clear on that. Secondly, as it relates to what we need to do, you're absolutely right. We have to do something, and this commission has done it. Our commission has great leadership with Chairman Ellis, who's been hunting money for us to get stuff done. We have a drainage study that's taking place currently, that's leveraging federal dollars currently. It's not just sitting there. That money is being put to use to actually figure out where we can improve our drainage infrastructure and improve our water flows. So when we look at... The last thing I'll say is we're going to have to look at some of these low-lying areas because the areas that flooded, you know, it was areas directly adjacent to the river. But the other thing we have to do is go back to that area planning. Because unfortunately, annexation placed two neighborhoods that are within our district, Bradley Point and Teal Lake, in harm's way. They were boxed in or flooded in like a moat because of poor area planning. So we have to have collaborative area planning.
That's your time. All right, here's our last question. We're going to do the time limit at just one minute here because we're going to run a little over. We want to get your closing statement. We want to get your closing statements as well. This one is about crime. So, what initiatives do you plan to support to strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and the community, and how will you ensure that residents feel safe and heard? Mr. Whiteley, I'll start with you. You have one minute.
Yes, so, community policing is an effort that our police department has employed, and I think that's important, because if the police department doesn't know who they are policing, then ultimately, it's not a good relationship. So, I would continue to fund our police department with the resources to expound upon their community policing, which is them engaging, just getting out and talking to the community, giving them kudos for just having positive interactions with our community. I think the other thing when we think about crime is creating opportunities for families to improve, so that crime isn't something that people turn to. Crime is a symptom of poverty, and so until we have an unrelenting assault on poverty, we're going to continue to see crime. And so, I would like to continue to address that, such as with youth court, creating positive interactions with the criminal justice system. When our youth understand how it works, perhaps it'll deter them from crime in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, what initiatives do you plan to support to strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and the community, and how will you ensure that residents feel safe and heard? In one minute.
Well, actually, you can address that with the budget as well, and so we can work with the district attorney's office and see exactly what resources they need in order to effectively provide the resources and the people to actually solve a lot of the crimes that are taking place. When you speak about the community being fractured with the police department or with law enforcement in general, some of that is based on the limited resources that law enforcement has in order to address some of these issues. And so, the community goes to law enforcement, it goes to the DA, and they try to get an update, and they can't really get an update on certain things, and that further fractures the relationship between the community and law enforcement. So, of course, we need to prosecute crime when it happens to keep the violent offenders and repeat offenders off of our street, but we also need to make sure that the DA and the law enforcement have the resources that they have, so they can effectively do the job.
Thank you. We will now have our closing statements from you, gentlemen. We want to thank you, of course, for participating in tonight's forum. Mr. Massey, we will begin with you. Sixty seconds, sir.
Well, again, I just thank you guys for the opportunity to be here. My name is Nara Massey. Of course, I'm running to be your next representative for District Six. If I am blessed and lucky enough to be chosen as your representative, I will work tirelessly to address the needs of our community. A lot of the issue that we have, that have been going on for years and years and years, they have not been adequately addressed, and my background is tailored to solve this issue. Again, my expertise has taken underperforming and distressed assets and turned them to high-performing and profitable operations. I've done that at every single job or stop in life professionally. That's my area of expertise, and so I want to take that same drive, energy, and effort, and instead of focusing on myself and my career, do this for the community, because Chatham deserves better, and I'm the person that can deliver.
Thank you. Mr. Whiteley, minute to you.
All right, so, thank you for having me, and I'll just say this to the voters of the Sixth District, you know me. You've seen me in your communities, you've spoken to me on the phone, you've seen me or communicated with me in your emails, and you know I've always been upfront and straight with you. Now, since I've been on the commission, I've made good on all my campaign promises. I've worked to create ways to engage our youth, youth court, expanding field uses. I've also worked with our community leaders to make sure that, excuse me, I've worked to make sure that you have access to me. My number's on social media. You know what you're getting when you're dealing with me. Now, we have so much growth happening, we cannot afford a steep learning curve. We need somebody strong at the wheel, who has courage, humility, and a true understanding of what we're doing. So, I'm going to ask you to vote for me, Aaron A. Dot Whiteley. My name may be second on the ballot, but just know that the citizens of the Sixth District are first on my list of priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for the candidates, please.